Fiercely pursuing accountability on policy and implementation. It's time for another DJ L seven candidate interview.
And now, a very important message.
Hi, my name is James Roguski. I am the moving force behind independent congress.com. Our purpose is very simple. We're fed up with the same old, same old from the Democrat and Republican Party. And we are supporting candidates who are running for Congress. That is the House of Representatives and the Senate in 2022. So long as they are not part of either machine. If they're independent or from some of the other parties like Green Libertarian Constitution or any other party. You have our support. And all we are offering is access to information about the candidacies of various people. Because we know that the mainstream media is not going to help them out. We're getting support from alternative media who are interviewing candidates. And getting this information out to people so that everyone can know that in 2022. When all of the districts are going to be redrawn because of the latest census. You will have more than just the two boring choices. It's not just Democrat and Republican. You will know that you have a choice to make change that you see fit when you go to vote in 2022. So visit independent congress.com, get involved and contact me anytime. My name is James Roguski and you can reach me at three one zero six one nine three zero five five.
This is your boy DJ L seven. As you know, I am interviewing every single person running for office here in New York City. But today, today I got a very special candidate because you know, a lot of these candidates out here. There was maybe like an executive here or fucking this right over there. And honestly, they have no idea what the working class people going through. They say they're going to fix welfare. They've never been on welfare. They have no idea what the fuck you're talking about. But this guy over here is not only fucking activist, right? Which I fucking love. You know what I mean? That's what this channel is all about. You know what I mean? But he got a little bit more to the game. So I'm gonna let you let him introduce himself though. Go ahead.
Okay, awesome. Thanks so much. Uh, and thanks for, thanks for having me on. So my name is Jonathan Bailey. Um, I'm a city council candidate for District 26. The, the Amazon HQ two district. Uh, I'm a labor organizer, a housing rights activist. As well as a leader in the fight for new systems of, of community safety and police accountability. I've been in a lot of, a lot of the fights, I think that, that really matter and have made a difference here in this area. In addition to like being, uh, you know, a member of, um, a leader in Justice for All Coalition, which is focused on housing rights for those in public housing. Fighting against gentrification through, um, tackling issues that, that face renters, you know, and pushing things like, an anti warehousing tax, uh, to, um, other fights in, in the workplace. I'm a co-founder of Amazonians United, which is our, our workers org, um, in Amazon warehouses. And I've been able to help us fight to win back our rights and win to, uh, uh, be able to keep a little bit more of the value that we generate. To the tens of millions, to the tens of millions in, uh, for, for workers, not just here in New York City, but nationwide. So yeah, that's the kind of fight I'm trying to bring.
Now, a lot of my cats, right, that's watching this show. Some of them may have different feelings about DSA, may have different feelings about AOC, may have different feelings about other, but Amazon, whatever, right? Yeah, right. I know there are a lot of right wingers watch this show, but in the end, right? Yeah, it's people like us that are on the streets that we're going to make the difference regardless, right? We're, we're more than talk. We are action. So in the end, right? All the people that's ready to do action, we're going to get together and find out where we can find the common ground. You know what I mean? So someone out there that's doing the work, much fucking respect. Yeah. I got a couple of questions for you though. And as you know, like a lot of times this smaller activists, right? We gotta really form powerful coalitions to really get things done. And a lot of these things are intertwined. So I like the fact, right? The things that you said made sense, right? The police reform, the housing, right? Yeah, people who are often poor are often, you know, the police kind of go there first, right? Because they're easy targets. So there's a lot of crossover in this, in particular realm. So let me, let me cover some of my allies first there. I'm also a personal, uh, personally involved with these issues. And let me ask for them. Number one, right? Yeah. This is, this is questions as a candidate. I'm going to ask you more related questions later on as an activist. This is like a double interview here. You guys are getting a double hitter here. Yeah?
Thanks. Sounds great.
So first one over here is Assange. Yeah? By tradition, most of my events start with a asking about Assange. How do you feel? Are you willing to, uh, do you think Assange should be freed?
Um, I, I mean, I think that like, uh, Julian Assange is like obviously targeted because of, uh, his, his challenge to, um, the like US empire, to the US war machine. Like I, I think all of that is, I, I think that that's like very clear. I, I don't like, I, I'm not sure exactly where like, um, like where like fights with like him are directly out right now. And I, I mean, it's, it's also, like as a candidate, I wouldn't be able to be really able to do anything.
Okay, let me tell you some, let me tell you some things that I, that I have lined up here. So first of all, right? The thing is that by interviewing, attempting to interview everybody who's running for office, right? I can actually set up like a coalition, like coalitions. If you're in one thing, I can help you find people who are doing other things because I'm doing that research. Number two, if I can get like a majority of the people who are, before they are elected to say that they support freeing Assange. I can technically have a reason to say New York City supports Assange, freeing Assange. And I will make that move the second they get elected. You get what I mean? That's another, that's another angle to that. Another thing to this, um, is that we can set up a powerful coalitions. Because the thing is that this is not just about this fight right here. And I'm very interested in working with you because even if you don't win, remember that this, uh, this race is particularly important because New York City Council, the, the control of New York City is up in a historic way. Because the number of seats will flip because of term limits. But guess what? Because of the census, also a lot of, uh, House of Representatives will be losing their districts because of redistricting. And they will no longer be incumbents. So we're actually planning on putting pressure on that race as well. So you know, um, either way, we'll be continuing this fight, right? I've been an activist for over 20 years. I've been part of the Green Party. A lot of new cats want to talk about joining a third party, blah, blah, blah. You know what I mean? They just joined up like a year or two ago, maybe four years ago. You know what I mean? I have a lot, I have a huge wealth and depth of perspective on that angle that I is often underappreciated, I feel, but whatever. Yeah?
No, I understand.
Yeah.
Um, we, we had, uh, you know, Jabari Brispert like first ran on the Green Party line. For city council, um, before, uh, like running again for state senate.
Yeah.
On, on the Democratic, uh, party ballot line. I mean, I, I know that like, you know, there's like a whole host of things there, but like, you know, I, I, I understand and I appreciate the, the effort to like build, um, a new like, you know, a worker's party, you know, which I'm like, I'm all for, you know?
I'm down for both, but people who don't understand the math, right? The Democrats have installed base of 44 mil and the Green Party has about less than 200 thou. I mean, it's more than a hundred to one. So the thing is that if you want a third party, you better go out there and build that freaking base instead of just pointing the fingers at us and blaming us all the time. You know what I mean? You're facing, you ask us to face impossible ads and get shot in the face. Come on, man. Come on, man. Get in the, get on the ground, do some work before you open that mouth. You know what I mean? Come on. Yeah?
Yeah. Well, I think, I think like for me, what is exciting about, um, DSA, like with the opportunity that DSA provides is one in which we can like actually like leverage the enthusiasm, uh, within political spaces, uh, to like, to, to, to build and cohere a working class movement. One that hopefully if, if we, uh, if we leverage the tools at our disposal well, and like really focus on developing that understanding and that, that, uh, that like political, uh, commitment and discipline, uh, within folks. Then, you know, there's, there's, I think, a, a hope for actually building, uh, another party. I think that like though, like the most important thing is, uh, ensuring like class independence, you know? Our working class movements have to be determined by us as working class folks. You know, we gotta like be like clearly examining the ways in which the nonprofit industrial complex, uh, like, uh, relates to people's movements and the ways that, um, our like, our, our political will is either like, directed in new, what new ways or is in some way like usurped from us.
We'll, we'll take on those theoretical elements later, but I just want to get through all the questions for my allies.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, um, you know, whether you think you can do anything or not for Assange, right? Yeah. Notice I'm like a fucking laser beam, right? Right? Like an activist, always honing in on the point, right? Looking for my deliverables, right? Yeah? Can you just, can you support freeing Assange? If you could, right? That would be nice. Like I said earlier, it could be valuable later on. If not, it's not, right? I could say 30% of, of candidates running support Assange, blah, blah, blah. Something like that. There is, right? Documentation is history, right? So can you, um, if you have any reason not to, let me know, but you know?
I, I'm against like holding any political prisoners. I'd like, I know, I know that, yeah, like, um, uh, I, I know that there are like accusations of like him, like, you know, like committing like sexual assault or like, like had like rape charges.
But he's innocent until proven guilty. He hasn't even got to stand trial for that.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I know that.
Free him to stand trial for that. You know what I mean? How about that? You know what I mean? Yeah.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm against like, like political prisoners and I like fully support like, I, like everybody. I believe that everybody should have a right to due process, uh, including like, you know, um, you know, accusations of, of like, of assault or, or sexual assault.
I deeply appreciate that. Yeah. I'm sorry, just something else, something going on out there. Yeah. That's all right. I'm good. I'm good. All right. Continue on, continue on, my brother.
Yeah, um, that, that's it, you know?
I feel you. I respect that, you know, um, if there really was a victim in a sexual assault case, I, I respect your, um, willingness to, to stay open and, you know, not deify someone and say that pass blame. That, that's definitely super important, but, um, you know, as to the political thing, definitely appreciate you in that, you know what I mean? So that, that's a strong stand. The second one would be, what's your position on UBI?
Well, so I, I think that it's like, a, a lot of it is like fun to investigate. Like my issue with UBI is that it's, it's a, a tool that like folks with more like, uh, kind of like a, like a more nationalist, uh, um, like, you know, view of bullet, of what our politics should be.
Interesting.
One that a lot of nationalists like, um, because it, it does a couple of things. Putting in a UBI like, um, it says to people, hey, like, you know, um, your like dependency upon the government is what like, it is, should be the relationship, uh, that you have to society in general. For like, you know, for, for, for like need of support. And like it does, it does two things that I think are, are bad.
You know, I can't be a hundred percent like supporting that, you know what I mean? I can't say that it, it definitely, it could be, uh, um, it doesn't have to be reliance on UBI to completely fund, fund all your stuff. It could be a supplemental type thing, right?
Yeah. Well, no, no, I, I think that there's like things that are, that we should explore. I just think that it's important for us to like see, uh, the possible pitfalls that come, right?
You're damn right.
Yeah. So like, uh, one being that, um, as like, as working class people, we hold power by virtue of us, like doing the work that creates society. Like that is the power that we hold. And understanding that is super important. If we don't, if we don't have like a really deep appreciation for the power that we hold as a class, then we can't leverage that power to change society. And, uh, a lot of ideas within that like space of like UBI, um, kind of like, kind of, uh, uh, like they, they distance us from that, from really developing our understanding of that power and utilizing, becoming like skilled in exercising that power. So that's, that's one concern I have. The other concern I have is that it's used as an argument, uh, for, for closed borders. It's used as an argument for a lot of anti-immigrant sentiment. The idea that like, oh, but like, we're just, you know, like, we're just like paying for people to like live. So if people come into the country, they're stealing from us, you know? Their existence in our country steals from us. And like that, that is a, that is a, uh, it's a powder keg for nationalist sentiment, you know? And that, that kind of scares me, especially as we move, um, towards a, a future where like eco apartheid is on the horizon, right? Like for instance, um, a lot of people aren't really discussing the significance of this, but it's extremely significant that, that Joe Biden is still building the wall, right? Trump's wall is now Biden's wall. And like what a lot of people miss in that discussion is that the wall was always going to be built by whoever. And the reason it, it's not because of like, you know, uh, sudden like racist sentiment against, uh, folks from Latin America. It's because we need like, the ruling class recognizes that it needs to prepare for eco apartheid. Right now there are mass migrations that are climate driven migrations.
I'm sorry, can I just want to ask for a clarification? Cause before you said class consciousness and are you, and then like I was thinking at that point, I was like, does he, is he talking about the working class? Or the low, lower class? Cause now you just said high class. So I'm thinking, or you know what I mean? Some people like to say predator class, right? That, that's my boy Frank analysis and the yellow brick road and them, uh, yellow brick road doesn't say, but that's Discord that I hang out on. But, uh, when you say that, um, right, which class are you talking about? Which class are you trying to awaken? The low class or the working class? Cause they're not doing the same thing.
Well, so in, in my, my view of things, um, you know, like those in poverty are still part of the working class. Like, uh, like, I, I mean, those of us, those of us who, who have been in or lived in poverty, like we're, we're fundamentally bound, uh, to the same class because like, you know, our, our.
According to socialist theory, I don't know if you've read a lot of it, but what about the lumpen proletariat? Aren't they like, isn't there like, hey, not that they're always right. Yeah. Not that those old school books, right? I don't really follow a hundred percent, but there have been classifications of people that, that do divide, that do separate between those two things.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I think that we can like, there, there is nuance there. But like, for instance, uh, people who are like, uh, homeless and jobless, like their existence, is necessary in order to depress the wages of working people, right? Our, our interests are like aligned, you know?
I like that. Ooh, I like that. Okay. That's cool. Yeah. All right.
Yeah, there's like, there's a lot.
You got a brain in there, man. I like that, man. I like that. Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
There we go. Yeah.
Like, you know, right now there's a lot of complaints about, uh, restaurants not, um, like not being able to afford, um, uh, or not being able to get the workers that they need in order to like, you know, generate their profits. And a lot of that is because there is a group of people that are like, no, we don't want to be treated like this anymore. Like we're treated terribly and you know, hey, if I, I'm spending an extra month or two on unemployment, just so I can avoid this like terrible restaurant I used to work in, I'm gonna do that. Like I, I'm going to take less money to just not be there. And so like.
I want to finish that question up though. So overall UBI, is it a yes or a no?
Um, I, oh, no, 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 we gotta finish.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad, my bad. Okay, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're jumping around a little bit.
Yeah, cause yeah, okay.
The, the other piece is like that, the, the piece of nationalism, right? It's the idea that if like, if we have UBI and like people are coming into, uh, the US, like that really sets, it sets the, the, like the ground for people to say, oh, they're stealing from us, right? Immigrants are stealing from us. And that like nationalist sentiment is extremely dangerous because like, we're already extremely prone to it as a, as a country. And that's, that's honestly why like Democrats can get away with, uh, like, you know, stoking nationalist sentiments just as much as like, you know, uh, like, you know, proto fascist Republicans. And that, that for me is a major concern. We, we're the ones that are taking value out of other nations. Like it makes sense why people like chase that value here, you know? If we're going to extract value out of other, other countries, then, then naturally it's only just, it's, it's like basic, you know, uh, you know, uh, kindergarten fairness, you know? Understanding that, hey, if you, if you take something from somebody, um, it makes sense that they should be able to come and get it back. So like that, that, that.
What you're saying is true to an extent, but then there's ways that it could be tried to be solved. But you know, like, but if you feel like that's, uh, just an overall net negative and it's too much to bear, right? Or it's too problematic, that, that's fair. You know what I mean? Everybody has different opinions on where the levels are. So that, that, that is, sounds concerning. Um, I get it.
Yeah.
You said, you said there's two angles, right? There's two angles. One of the angles was this nationalistic drive. The other one was the kind of like, um, oh no, that was me digging into the working class. So overall, I guess the answer to UBI would be no?
It, it, I might, I guess overall like would be it's complicated. I would like prefer to like have, um, a like a, a state like funded program for like, you know, rebuilding infrastructure, you know? I, I think that like, I, I think that that has like, like will probably actually give, it, it, like, because we hold power by virtue of, um, our like, our ability to like, you know, to do the work that like allows society to run. Just doing anything that disempowers that like is, I, I think, you know, something to, to be very careful about. For folks who like, yeah, I, I, like for anybody who like can't work for any reason. I'm like very much supportive of, of ensuring that we have like robust social safety nets to make sure that like everyone is taken care of. I, I just don't want to like lean too far into things that disempower workers.
Actually, that's a really good, because one of the guys from Yang Gang went to the MPP event and he said, we could have a whole class of people that are on part-time wages and just supplemented by, uh, by UBI. And that's not the future that I think a lot of people are looking for, to make like, you know, minimum wage and have something by UBI. In fact, that's kind of what we're already doing with welfare, supplementing people's minimum wages that they can't afford, right? So it's really, you're right. A lot of these things that are supposedly for us, right, are weaponized against us. So you're very, and I appreciate the nuance and understanding that, right? So either system could work as long as we are critical and aware and we continue to, you know, watch the detail. And I appreciate your, uh, it's been, some people call themselves activists and I don't really know, you know what I mean? But you're, you're, I know people might feel something about DSA, but you're saying the right things to me and I feel good about it so far.
I'm, I'm a labor activist. I mean, I work at an Amazon warehouse. Like I work the night shift at an Amazon warehouse, you know, me and my coworkers, we make a little bit more than minimum wage.
Yeah, we'll be covering that like in a moment. Yeah. I just want to get, because I have, I have usually four questions I ask in the beginning for my partners. And then I get to my questions, you know what I mean? So I'm asking questions for other people right now. Yeah? So the next one is going to be the disabled community. And the thing is that people with disabilities often, right now they're allowed to be paid sub minimum wage. But if we look at minimum wage, it's almost like a subsistence wage. Can we agree or would you support, or at least getting minimum wage for people with disabilities?
Yeah, absolutely.
Cool. Appreciate you on that. Yeah?
Yeah. Yeah. No, I, I mean, folks with disabilities are particularly, um, easy for government to, to take advantage of. You know, because like, I, you know, like folks, you know, with various disabilities, oftentimes they're also locked out of having that labor power, right? Like that, like power in relationship to society by virtue of their like, you know, their, their.
Production ability. Yeah.
Yeah, their production ability. And that like, that's exactly, that's exactly the same reason why I sometimes am worried about like the conversations around UBI. Like what I want is I want us as like a class to be empowered so that we can shape the society that we want to see. But yeah, as like a legislator, like, like, of course I like, yeah, it's, it's ridiculous to, to pay, folks with disabilities less than minimum wage.
Okay. So the next question I'm going to ask you is, uh, if we take a look at people who are in the trans community, having been homeless, you see people who are trans and they're often like the most discriminated against. They're living kind of like, I would say, some of the roughest lives out there. I really, my heart really goes out to them. So the thing is that they, they sometimes because discrimination they face in the workplace, they, they may find themselves up in public housing, right? And the thing is that, but when they're in the public housing, like there's no law that says you can discriminate against people who are trans. But they end up getting discriminated against anyways. Maybe they get jumped by some dudes in hoods. They can't really report it very easily. Someone smears shit on their door, you know what I mean? They don't know who did it, you know what I mean? And then they end up feeling, they end up getting harassed and they end up leaving public housing. If you think about it, right? It ends up becoming like a type of denial of service to that community. So if they're underserved, what, what, um, do you have any suggestions about how we can, right? Even though there's no laws, what can we do to help these people and make sure that they're getting properly serviced? And not just say, oh, I tried to make a law about it and now I wash my hands of the shit, you know what I mean? Nah, we're going to look out for these people. How are you going to do that?
Yeah. So like for me, I, I live, uh, like in Woodside on the border of, of Jackson Heights, which is like.
Oh, that's the hot community for that. Yeah. In fact, it's even written about in United Nations reports and stuff like that for human trafficking. But it's a huge trans community out there. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. But I mean, like it, it, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. So like, I, I mean, first of all, I think that like, like government has a responsibility in really actively tackling, uh, de-stigmatization. Like, like if you have a, a, a society, um, like first of all, like, you know, obviously our laws should not, uh, be upholding, like any, uh, like trans exclusionary like policies in any way, shape or form. But also like, we have a cultural, we have a cultural problem around like LGBTQ identities. And I think that like, we have the responsibility of, of proactively like tackling those because it's like, when we just, when we just leave it be, like that's, that allows like, uh, um, like transphobic and homophobic sentiments to, to fester. And then become i- issues within, um, like, you know, politicized issues often that are generally issues that manifest themselves violently.
Let me throw you at you, go ahead, or unless you have, unless you have a plan you're about to say.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, you do? Great. Okay.
So like, first of all, like within our education system, um, we have to be, uh, like, you know, we, we've, we've learned a lot about like, hey, how do you actually help people like understand and convince people? Like I'm a real big fan of, uh, Jonah Berger's like, uh, books. And, and like, I, I think there's like a lot in there. Well, first of all, there is a lot in there that, uh, like LGBTQ activists have used, like specifically trans activists have used in the state of Florida to, uh, to like prevent reactionary sentiments around, uh, trans legislation there. I think that a lot of those ideas should be standardized and like, you know, used at like our, our, you know, K through 12 levels. Um, I think that we need to be funding programs, uh, you know, nonprofits that, that do that work of, uh, diffusing, um, uh, reactionary sentiment around, uh, like, you know, various trans issues. Um, and then I think that, um, you know, uh, because I, I think what you mentioned was a cultural problem, right? You're talking about like people taking it into their own hands to be, uh, like violent towards trans folks. Which is like, you know, that's per, that's a particular, uh, a challenge. One that's beyond just like, you know, pass the law and then it's good, you know? You know, you have to attack like the, the cultural issues. So then I'd also like, you know, work towards, uh, I, I think that we have to fund, uh, programs that, uh, you know, such as violence interrupter, uh, programs. And also, uh, the, um, there's a particular program that's been like really successful in decreasing the amount of violence, um, that we like see in society, um, called, uh, the Cure Violence, uh, uh, program. And I, I think that that's like also something that we should be like putting our, our resources towards. And then like when it comes to like, like in the circumstance where like, um, where like, you know, we, we have to be doing things like right now, right now. Well, I, I really support, um, increasing the public housing stocks so that, um, we, you know, and there, there's various ways that we can do it, but I support increasing the public housing stock. And I, I think that it makes sense for us to like have certain communities that are really targeted specifically for, uh, LGBTQ folks. Like I, I, I think that there's, there's ways in which we can create safe spaces without, um, uh, you know, it, it being like disenfranchising in any way to like anybody else. I, I think that we should be like dedicating resources to folks who are, who are affected most by, uh, reactionary violence.
Ooh, I like that. So actually I do have a question coming about that, about one proposed solution. But I want to ask for some clarification of some of the things that you said earlier, just to make sure that I really have it under, have it down. So when you talked about like, um, uh, K through 12 education, are you talking about like normalizing like trans behaviors? So maybe the kid opens up like a book and there's like a trans couple in there or something like that. Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And then later on, you said something about, uh, violence, uh, interrupters. What is a violence interruption program? What is that? What is that?
So within New York City, um, there's a particular, uh, program that has been, uh, discussed a lot. You know, one out of, um, you know, 696 Build Queensbridge. So like, I, I mean, essentially in, in a nutshell, like violence interrupter programs, um, you know, do, do exactly that. People who are like from the community who also likely have, um, experiences that parallel. Some of the folks who are, are particularly at risk, um, for like, you know, violence being done upon them. And also then by extension, them like doing violence on others. Folks like who, who have, uh, parallel experiences, especially, uh, you know, um, are like tasked with like, you know, interrupting that violence when they see that it's likely to occur. Like there's, there's like, there, there's people who have like significant experience in it, you know? And that are, are like, you know, that like, it's a professionalized practice is, is what I'm saying already. You know, and that are are like, you know, that, like, it it's a professionalized practice is is what I'm saying already. We already like, we already have it, we've already seen its success. What we have to do is like actually, like, you know, fund it. We gotta actually put our resources there. We have to say, hey, are we going to tackle violence proactively? Um, or are we going to just, uh, you know, send squad cars, you know, in after like. Violence has happened within a community. I'm I'm, I'm I'm serious about, I'm serious about violence, you know, um. Like, I I'm serious about tackling violence as an issue within our communities and doing it proactively.
I appreciate that, yeah. I actually actually talked with another, um, person about like maybe the aesthetic model, about how they have like their own community members, uh, interacting first. Um, so it sounds very similar, that that's cool. Now, I wanna ask about as in terms of, so. Actually, this is interesting because it kind of gets to exactly your solution right there. So let's take a look at this particular instance, right? Let's say pays that we say, right, reporting, right, we know that self-reporting is also a problematic thing. But let's say this way that we say one percent of the community is trans, the homeless community is trans. Then we look inside of our public housing and then we say only point five percent of the community in our public housing is trans, so we can see that the numbers are. Artificially low for some reason. What happens if we created like a protect, a protected area or we said like, um. You know, maybe there's uh housing specialized for trans people like in a certain area, right? But that could be controversial because it could be considered ghettoizing them, right? Or, right, people might like lie about being trans to get into that housing, you know what I mean? So, uh, uh, were trans people just, uh, you know, who knows? So. Um, do you still support maybe that type of a, almost, I could say, member like a quota system, or if you're creating, right, yeah? Um, communities of trans people, it's almost like creating ghettos or segregation, you know what I mean? So, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, well, I I mean, so I I I was a little like, I guess, careful, um, in saying. Like, when I, when I talked about like having dedicated spaces, um, you know, kind of the reason why I said. Uh, I I didn't say like spaces that are exclusive to.
Yeah, okay.
You know, is because of like.
I could tell, I know, I I rec, I say, I seen that, I seen that, yeah, I know.
It's cause I, like, I I understand that's a concern, you know, um, yeah, like, we don't wanna be like creating like a new system of like. Of like redlining around like, like, uh, LGBTQ identities, you know, of course, you know? Um, like, that's a concern, but like, it's it's one that I think that can be tackled. Uh, like, on on the, like, o- on the community level, like, I don't think that there's like. I don't think that there's necessarily as much like a legislative like solution to it, you know, I like.
Maybe can let them choose somehow or let them, you know, yeah.
I I don't think that like, a a legislator saying, oh, you have to have this many trans people, like, I don't, that that makes sense.
Both numbers are wildly off, you will take some steps, but you know, I guess, uh, yeah, you're, if it's a little bit off, you know, you will accept some variance.
Yeah, yeah, like, i- it's something that should be like monitored, it needs to be tackled also with like, like organizing, you know, um. You know, there's, there's like organizing strategies, I think, to address that. And I think that like at the legislative level, um, you know, making sure that there's spaces that are like. That are like very heavily like, like recognized as this is, this is like. Uh, this is, this goal is prioritized in this space. Um, I think that that is probably enough. Um, to like, to like provide, um, to provide an increased amount of safety. Um, like, a lot of times people weed themselves out, like, I I'm no stranger to like how, um. How much, uh, like, like, there there's. I I I'm no stranger to like how uh reactionary a lot of like working class communities are around LGBTQ issues. Uh, like, I think that like black working class communities especially have like, have have have, we've demonstrated ourselves to be. Um, like particularly reactionary and there's a whole host of reasons like within, um. You know, within US history for like, like why that is. Um, I know, like, uh, like, a- as a black man in the US. I'm like, I'm very familiar with like the ways in which like toxic masculinity are, um. Are 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 like sold to me specifically around like my blackness as well. And so like, I I recognize like that the issue is complex, but I also know like, bros will weed themselves out, like. You know, like folks with like serious toxic masculinity, the type that like, um. That like, you know, usually results in violence, they're not going to be like making it their thing to go to like. Uh, like, you know, like gay clubs, you know, they're not like, they're, they weed themselves out for that, you know? And I think that, like, that's why as like a legislative solution, um, like demonstrating that a certain space. Is going to prioritize certain, certain issues, like that's enough to create that's. Like a a significant increase of safety, because like, most people will weed themselves out.
That makes sense, yeah, that makes sense. And I appreciate that, man. I like that, uh, coming from a streets background, that makes a lot of sense to me, actually, so.
Yeah, yeah, and and I I could say. I should say that doesn't mean at all that we, uh, neglect, uh, um, uh dismantling like homophobia and transphobia. In in other spaces as well, just that, um, that I think that, you know, I think that safe spaces are a good thing. For like folks who have like, are are particularly at risk for having violence done on them, you know?
Appreciate that a lot. That's one of the best answers we've gotten yet, for real, man. You're kick, you're kicking ass, yeah? Now I'm gonna get into the regular like kind of campaign questions, right? And then my activist questions release burn later on, yeah? Maybe I'll even chop that into a separate interview, I just, uh, maybe it's the same thing, we'll see, yeah? But let's get to the regular campaign stuff. So right, right now, the probably the hot topic is that's COVID thing, everybody's wearing their mask, stuff like that, right? Uh, maybe reopening is planned for July. What's your stance on reopening the COVID s- uh, vaccine, stuff like that? What what's your deal on that whole? Um, stuff, yeah.
Uh, wha- what do you mean?
Some people are cool with reopening in July, some people wanna wait, some people say that we should be opening right now, the whole thing is ridiculous. Some people say that, you know, um, in order for us to reopen, they wanna mandate vaccination. Some people say that they are horrified of the idea of mandatory vaccinations. Um, you know, as terms of reopening, right, what's your stance on, right, then you got the kids, I think all the college kids are getting vaccinated. Um, seems to look extreme to me, but you know, um, I guess those institutions have the power to make those rules, which. Uh, on our young seems, uh. What's your stance on it? It's not about what I think, it's about what you think, right? So what do you, what's your take on this thing?
So, I I guess my my take on that is like, so I there, like, like, I think starting with schools is really good. Um, because there's like a lot of debates particularly around schools. Um, I I think that like, like, there's a lot of drive by like teachers to ensure a a safe workplace. Um, that isn't like a hotbed for, um, you know, uh, like putting themselves at risk or like. You know, spreading like within schools. Um, a- and to me, I think that teachers should be empowered to make, uh, the decisions that make sense for their workplace. Um, I I I think it, yeah, I I think it makes less sense for 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 me to try to be making the decision for all of them. Um, when it comes to like, like, you know, o- other aspects of our our society in general. I I think that this is probably something that like we should be like looking to, um. Uh, like health professionals guidance, um, like for me, I'm, like, I I. Like, there is, like, eh, okay, I I I understand, like, uh, like, okay. Uh, I, there's a few things here, cause like, embedded in this is the argument about like distrust of, uh. Our like health, uh, systems, right? Yeah, yeah, a- and like, look, I understand that, I totally understand that, you know? Um, like, uh, like, you know, there's, there's been, there's been like, you know, experiments. On like medical experiments that have been conducted on black people in the US like throughout our history. And I totally understand the distrust of, uh, our our healthcare systems, I totally get it. Um, and especially when it comes to like, there being like a profit motive i- embedded within our our healthcare systems. Yeah, like, that's scary, like, people, people, like, you know, knowing that somebody like might make a dollar by like. Uh, uh, by messing with your health, that's scary, that's very scary. A- and I, I like, I sympathize with all of those like. The those like frustrations, like totally, I mean, the the reason why I think that, um. That taking out, uh, the profit motive out of healthcare is a lot, i- is 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 because of this kind of stuff. We, we have reasons to distrust distrust some healthcare, uh, so some facets of our healthcare systems. Um, because, you know, you know, some people are doing it just because they're trying to, trying to to, uh. Maximize their profits, um, instead of the primary driver being taking care of people's health, so. I I think that that's a deeper challenge, it's a deeper challenge that we have to tackle and we should realize that. This is a debate only because we haven't tackled that issue. Um, until then, though, there's a lot of people that aren't, uh, that aren't making those decisions based upon a profit motive. Um, and I think that like.
So on this case, right, uh, this is my, I I really stick to my position, but we're so similar, man, I have such a, you know, connection here, man. So the thing is that, right, notice that they don't care if you're immune. They don't care if you are, right, and a vaccination provokes your body to make the antibodies, but if you're already. Right, you'll notice that a lot of these little, uh, vans do not give the antibody test because they want to give you the shot. Because they're gonna make anywhere from three hundred to six hundred just for for sticking with the shot, you know what I mean? Notice that they don't say, they don't, they don't care if you're immune or not, they care if you're vaccinated, they want a receipt that you bought their product. Not that you, right, not that you're actually healthy and can fight off the virus, you see what I mean?
Yeah, um, I I I'm unsure about, like, I I, I'll tell you, I haven't, um.
Right, you're not a doctor, you haven't really studied healthy, I get it.
Well, I I haven't looked into, um, like, the the current cost of like, um, the antibody test in relation to, um. Like, the vaccines, um, and so I I don't know, I feel like a little bit unprepared at least. To like have a a meaningful conversation about, um, to what extent it could be profit driven. Um, a- and and to what extent it could be like, uh, like, there are lack of awareness or or, you know, to what extent it. Like, there there's are are valid arguments there, um, but like, one, I I'm not like, like, I. Vaccines have have literally slayed one of the four like horsemen of the apocalypse.
Yeah, Polly, alright, yeah.
Yeah, that, like, va- vaccines have like, have like done more for, like, humanity as a species. Than any other development. There's, there's scores and scores and scores of people who have died. Due to like illness that we now have the ability to prevent. Uh, like way more people than have died in all of our wars put together. So, I I mean, I have like a lot of confidence, uh, in just the general good of, uh, of vaccines. I understand that, like, yeah, I I understand, I understand the distrust, I understand the distrust and like, I I. I understand, like, and I I think there's like valid reasons for where that distrust comes from. But, um, uh, like, I have a, I have a deeper amount of confidence. In, um, healthcare providers that are not in a position, uh, where they are generating like. Uh, significant profits based upon what decision they make. Um, healthcare providers who are in that position, I think, can be, can be trusted far more than our fears. Of, uh, of 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 vaccines.
Okay, let me, uh, let me, uh, ask another question about the, uh, so we talked a little bit about like schools and stuff like that, right? What's your, what's your thoughts on education reform?
Um, uh, uh, that is.
That's a wide topic, yeah, so. Let let me cover a couple of the issues that other candidates usually talk about and then cover one of the issues that they don't talk about and I think this will be very interesting to you. You may already have something going with the DSA, we'll see. So the thing is that, um, SHSAT is kind of like a big topic. Gifted and talented GNT programs and Bloomberg kind of made some, uh, no, not Bloomberg, uh, De- de Blasio made some recent moves. Or, you know, has been making moves on that particular front. Uh, do you, are are you planning on continuing that for, that that particular move like away from SHSAT? Or are you for SHSAT? Okay, so, okay?
A- a- absolutely, um, like, you know, New York has like the most segregated schools and like.
Nation, yeah.
Yeah, like, I mean, we created that, like.
Sure.
I I mean.
I get that, you know what I mean? And I I, I feel for my black and Latino brothers, but let me just take it from another angle, right, yeah? When you look at Harvard and the way they discriminate against my own people, you know what I mean? They use the soft stuff, they use the, oh, you don't seem like a leader, oh, you seem like blah, 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 you know what I mean? We've been dominating academics since the eighties. Do you think we like being led by people that are less competent, have less, less knowledge, less experience, you know what I mean? No, they just use, like, they use education as a, as another way to enforce racism, you know what I mean? But then, like, you know, unfortunately, when we're, when we have the, have the education, they still discriminate against us, but they just don't talk about it, you know what I mean? They make up other reasons. It's just another reason to, so the thing is that, we, like, I feel like the Asian community feels like that's the only way. That we can get any fairness, because, and it's still not fair for us, it's not like English is our first language, right? But the thing is that they're always gonna say, oh, you're not a leader, you're not, you don't have people skills, make up some bullshit, you know what I mean? And they they use it to hurt us, so. How can we find that middle ground, right? Cause I I I I get it, blacks and Latinos, it's not fair, you know what I mean? How can we take care of them? But not let ourselves get fucked over.
Yeah, um, uh, like academic accomplishment as like, uh, as an equalizer. Um, yeah, so, I I mean, I I think that. I I don't think that, uh, that, that education within the US is anything like a meritocracy. Um, I I don't think it is remotely.
I'd agree.
I I like, I, yeah, I I feel like we we should like, kind of normalize the recognition that it's not. Um, and like, I can understand people's like frustrations with it not like manifesting itself that way. Um, a- and I I also like understand like, you know, people's like, like gravitation towards like. Things that are like meritocracies, uh, especially for like, you know, colonized peoples. Um, because like, you know, uh, wh- when, when systemic racism e- exerts its influence upon. Uh, shaping your life, um, you know, like, that going to somewhere where like merit is like the, the. Like, key or sole decision maker is, it's good, I mean, like, basketball is the most, uh, like, meritocracy. Like, uh, i- i- it's, you know, out of all the sports, it's the one that is the most, uh. Um, you know, uh, eh, the closest thing resembling a meritocracy and I, it. It doesn't surprise me at all that that's where, um, a lot of like black athletes find themselves, like, that makes, that makes absolute sense to me. Um, uh, I, I just, like, when it comes to like our education, I think that. We need to make sure that we are providing, uh, um, like educational opportunities in an equitable way. To everyone, um, I I think that like, you know, when it comes to, uh, issues of, uh, like, you know, things around affirmative action. You know, I recognize affirmative action to just simply recognize the fact. That our educational systems are are, you know, have, uh, you know, like. You can, you can find white supremacy within our educational systems, the way that, the way that schools are funded. Um, you know, and and what that looks like on the classroom level. During my time as a teacher in New York City DOE schools, I I gotta see that firsthand, I gotta see like. What that looked like in different classrooms all across the city. Um, I, to me, I wanna make sure that our schools are properly funded, uh, in an equitable way. Um, and that we're not using, um, uh, we're we're, we're not finding ways in which to. Uh, segregate our schools economically and racially.
Okay, so I wanna understand your position a little bit more. So, I understand, I understand your SHSAT position is against and that's fine. Now, it sounds to me almost like what you're saying now is like, you might be against gifted and talented programs. Maybe, oh, you are, okay, just wanna make sure, okay? So you think that it should be equitable, uh, funding across instead of like, you know. Taking some people and saying, you know, look, that they're performing better, let's give them a little bit more resources. And that that's often problematic because what happens is that the rich kids, right, their mommy and daddy push hard. And they get into that program like George Bush into Yale, right, whether they deserve it or not, you know what I mean? So, and then they get all kinds of weird titles thrown, so I could see justification for both sides of it, we've had some pretty compelling arguments from the other side. But it's good to know your position on that, you know what I mean? Appreciate that, yeah? So besides like the high, oh, oh, another thing that people say is we could build like a lot more, like magnet schools, but you, instead of having magnet schools, you would just build up the schools that we have. Right, instead of, or creating more?
Yeah, I I mean, I think that there's, I think that there's like various options for what it looks like. I mean, I don't mean to say that like, hey, every student like advances through their like educational path. In the same way or at the same like rates, you know, based upon like different topics, like. Like, kids have different like struggles and different like, uh, natural talents, like, that's pretty normal for us as human beings. Um, I think that like, uh, you know, what we have to be mov, I I I mean, this is, I guess, really like. Really like forward, uh, like thinking, but like, of course, I I think that, you know, our. Whatever our educational system looks like in the future, it should be able to embrace, um. Uh, the fact that, you know, people have like, you know. It should be able to embrace um uh the fact that, you know, people have like, you know, different natural talents and. Um it, our our educational system should embrace that and be capable of like helping people advance at their at their own pace. Um I I think that like, though also, like, our our educational institutions should recognize um human intelligence. As as it exists, as of right now, um you know, especially like IQ focuses on. Like literary and uh like um like like mathematical, like logical um intelligence. And um, uh like, yeah, linguistic and um like uh uh yeah, lo- logical intelligence, I guess. Um whereas like, I I'm like a, this is, you know, I know that some people will find this nutty, but I'm like a Howard Gardner fan who um. You know, like, developed uh um like it his, like the the program of like the eight intelligences, you know.
I'm more like that, yeah, like space relation is one of them, right, yeah, so it's like very rarely tested, right? Supposedly males have advantage, but, you know, yeah, that in that particular realm might be.
But but.
True.
But it's, I I think that like, you know, we create uh conceptualizations of who is smart and who isn't.
Yeah, that too.
I- in ways that are politically motivated, right? And then like, like we measure those in ways that are motivated and we make our decisions around who gets what because of. You know, those political motivations. And so like, our understanding of human intelligence itself ends up being skewed. And so like, I I I don't know, I don't, I I'll tell you, I don't know eh the exact solution for um. Uh what are are like our future educational systems look like in order to recognize that fact. Um and like lean into it in a way that like helps um he- helps kids advance, uh you know, at their. At at their own pace through like their their various like talents and and challenges. Um but uh, you know, for me, like, that's that's the direction that we have to be headed at.
That's amazing, man, you know, honestly, you're building, you're getting a fan here, man. You're smart, I could tell, you know, you're way around the questions, you know what, you know the points ahead of time, you're way ahead of a lot of other candidates, you know what I mean? Whether people will recognize and respect that is to be decided, you know what I mean? But you're, right now, it's just talk, though, we're gonna see, it sounds like you have some real stuff behind it, you know what I mean? But you you definitely talk the talk, you understand it on a deeper level, which I appreciate, you know what I mean, for real.
Thank you.
Let's talk, uh, one more thing about education is actually, uh, you'll see if you go to DGL seven dot com and you check my calendar. You'll see that I tried to actually schedule the education forum for next week. Um and the thing is that I actually invited all the student governments from all and the entire uh city of New York. Unfortunately, um I've been in student uh really um back in college back in the nineties. Um that's kind of like where I started getting serious about activism. Huh? Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I like mine, I had a, the phone was going off.
Yeah, no, that's cool, that's cool, I bet you we're gonna go a little overtime cuz uh, you know, um, this is kind of going in depth that. I can go with to a depth with you that I can't with other candidates, which I really appreciate, yeah? So the thing is that the education thing, um, look, you know, um, CUNY used to be free for students in New York City. And the thing is that the student activism movement has been really um basically taken apart by university administrations. That were tired of seeing you student activists come up and make trouble for the local politicians when they get in a lot of money. So the thing is that you can see like back in the seventies, back in the eighties, right, students would be striking, they'd be really fighting for affordable tuition now. That, I think that CUNY has a tuition hike of two hundred dollars every year or semester, that means in four years, your tuition went by eight hundred dollars every every uh. Every four years and that's guaranteed, that's insane, that's insane. Uh and we talk about making education more affordable, when things are cheaper than ever, right, with computers, why are we charging more and more and more? So I'm trying to get that back into the conversation, but the amount of students that are getting back to me is very low. And uh the it's the the movement is extremely co-opted, what about DSA? Do you guys have like a student maybe type of division where we can like start making this happen?
Well, I, the the place to reach out would be um uh YDSA.
I'll reach out to them, I also reached out to um National Action Network, they got student groups too. Um I'm contacting them myself, I just sent out the email to every single one, have not received even one email back. Yo, honestly, I work with a lot of student governments, there are very few in between, people like myself that are true activists, we are chased out of student governments, it's horrible, yeah? Uh by by uh university administrators that that know what we're about because they learned back in the seventies that they took their hip, what they learned from the hippies. And they use it against us, it's so sad, yeah? But um, yes, the education, uh, I guess you're for affordable education in colleges and stuff, right? And you'd like to see those, those prices go down?
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, but nobody's talking about it, I I, come on now, come on, you get what I mean? Yeah.
I mean.
Are people talking about it?
Uh, well, I I, people have been celebrating the uh Excelsior program, like.
Okay.
A bit, you know, like, um.
We should be going way further, we should be just dropping the tuition, all this CUNY colleges by half or even making it free again.
Yeah.
What the freak, you know what I mean?
No, I I I mean, there's, there's like, I, I mean, look, like, as as CUNY like changed. From an institution that basically like was educating New York City's like, you know. Uh, you know, um like, you know, they're like, kind of like, like, really honestly, part. Parts of like the ruling class of New York City, basically like the 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 kids of wealthy like white folks, you know? As CUNY shifted from uh educating like that group of people to predominantly like. Um uh like, you know, POC, uh, you know, like working class New Yorkers. It changed from an institution that was free to one that like, you know, that was expensive and I like.
Yo, for real, right? What the fuck is wrong with these people?
I I that's, that's what happened.
You're right, oh, it's so sad, it's ridiculous.
Yeah, and like, I mean, of course, like, you know, like, our our society is built to like extract value out of certain groups of people. A- and to like, a- and and to give advantages to others, um, like, I I mean, I think that, like. The the morphing of CUNY from a a free like institution to to one that. Um working class people like struggle to afford is, I I I think it's such a good example of that.
Yeah, we need to bring that back conversation, it's ridiculous, yeah. Yo, you're the man, Jonathan, we we're gonna do some work either way, whether you win or not, I hope you win, but if either way, we're gonna be doing, you're gonna see him on the front lines, brother, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
So we talked about education reform, the city's in charge of certain things, like the federal takes care of the mail, state takes care of some other stuff, you know what I mean, like legalizing, do they legalize weed? Hell, yeah, but I'm not sure, but let's go to talk about uh this police, apparently you've done some work with police reform. Uh by the way, I don't know if you know this, but we had actually a a police reform, uh uh poli- a panel discussion and a candidate debate. Where we we had the blessings with Serpico, yeah, we had uh, and what what I really like about you is you have like a lot of different uh backgrounds, like you said, like you've been a teacher. You've you've been actually homeless before several times, right, yeah, so you know the system where it's broken and where it works, you know what I mean? People who have never been a security guard, they've just been executives at some kind of company, right, yeah, they're trying to pass police reform, they've never had the cops harass them. They've never actually even been a police, or or worked at from the police officer's side, you get what I mean? So we had a former police officer, we had an inmate who's running for public advocate, his name Devon Nash, also commenting, mental health professional, it was pretty cool. And activist myself, that panel, um, I'm really hoping that we can make see some of these upcoming panels really fire, I know if you're there. I know that the quality just went up by a significant amount, yeah? So I'm definitely.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, so police reform, um, what's your ideas there?
Um first and foremost, we need to pass the Community Power Act. Um so I've been really involved with the uh with the campaign for an elected civilian review board. Uh for um for some time, um. Uh, you know, what, right now, police accountability, uh, you know, happens through the civilian complaint review board. Um, you know, which is appointed by the police commissioner. And uh and by the mayor, who of course appoints the police commissioner, uh and then like very partially by city council. Like, that's clearly not a system of police accountability, like, clearly.
Yeah.
What's 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 worse is that um, uh even when like the body makes good decisions. Uh, the police commissioner can just ignore it.
Yeah, they're incentivized to under-report, they'll be like, I don't want that scandal happening under my administration, so we're just gonna, even though we know it's wrong, we're just gonna not talk about it.
It's.
They're incentivized.
Bad, yeah, it's really bad.
Yeah.
Um in fact, like, it's been shown that uh uh civilian complaint review boards, if they don't have power. Um they they actually result in even more police violence on on communities. Um and like, to me, when I look at that, I'm like, of course it does, of course it does. Like, I mean, there's ex-police officers that's on the board, uh and are like making decisions uh like over, you know, like. You know, like people who work for like their their friends, you know?
No, they be, they be fucking with me and my boys on Twitter, they be going after Serpico, they be calling him fucking rat. Yo, they, with Serpico, you know what I mean, and my boy Stephen Lee, who's helping to redefine that question, they, and me, they be fucking with us. Ex-police officers, for real, and then I'm like, and then they be like in the police officer's uniform and I be typing, yo, you're in your police officer's uniform saying this stupid shit? I will fucking paste you to the wall, you motherfucker, you know what I mean, how does NYPD feel about you saying this stupid shit, you know what I mean? Then they quiet down for a little bit, but yo, I'm going at them.
Yo.
You're damn right.
Like, the the police, they they're not like, they like, they're serious, you know, like, they're serious.
I got friends that are cops too, but some of them, them union people hold, they go way the fuck too far, they're like, they're they're against us, straight up, they're against us. They're for themselves, it's fucked up.
Well, police unions specifically exist to like uh create the the political power and like the the. You know, the, like, the political power that allows police officers to kill people with impunity, like, I mean. Unions, I I think, I think it's really like, I I don't like the idea of thinking about police unions. Being unions because unions exist to support like working people, right, to end exploitation, or like it. Like, unions prevent exploitation, police unions create uh justification for and the political power necessary.
Yeah.
In order to enable violence executed on people.
We need accountability, right, yeah, they they, they're just doing stupid shit, like, straight up, obviously stupid shit, yeah.
So, so the elected civilian review board, it uh replaces the CCRB with a board that is elected. That has uh an extra amount of representation from uh the communities that are are police hardest. Uh by like recognizing the the amount of police complaints as a driver uh for um. For like extra representation, by doing that, we make sure that it is uh an anti-colonial uh institution. Not just uh, not just, you know, um, like, you know, not just like uh like police accountability. But specifically one that um uh creates extra representation for colonized communities. Um it also has an independent uh prosecutor, so um instead of like cops, you know, prosecuting cops. Um it's like actually like, it's actually independent, you know, that function and responsibility is independent. Uh but most importantly, um it has the power to make binding decisions. Uh as a body, it can fire police officers. Um and that's, that's like a necessary, that's a necessary piece, you, the the body is not a valid one. If it doesn't have the ability to uh discipline police.
I'd like to point out to the people that are watching right now, to, I want you to watch this guy again, necessary, if necessary. And notice that when you compare it, what he says against the other other people running, he says a lot of specifics. He's very, I I love that so much, people who have these vague ass platitudes, they need to shut the fuck up, you know what I mean? But this guy, right, not saying that I agree with every single point, but you know, nothing, it's a complex task, you know what I mean?
I want people to understand.
It's pretty well-developed, honestly, and and you have like, you know, like little nuances here that are really showing the depth that what you've thought about this with the, about this issue. You've obviously spent time thinking about and thinking about where it can break and things like that, and that's someone, that's a good leader, the from, from, that's just what I'm saying, but. A good leader will anticipate problems and not just react to them as they come, they will anticipate problems before they arrive. And that way, there's, you know, you you, that way you don't have shit breaking all the time like we have here, you know what I mean? So I really appreciate uh your, the amount of ti- the obvious amount of time that you spend thinking about this issue, thank you. Yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, no doubt, man. Um so this, the citizen review board, is there any other particular, that's a huge idea right there, I know it's just one. You probably have other particular, anything else with the police reform thing?
Um.
So many.
That, yeah, there's so many, I mean, I could, I could talk, we could talk for hours.
But this is a, this is a big one, yeah, that's that's a great idea, though, and that's that's something that other people have talked about, some similar ideas. And I really liked that a lot, man, and you really kind of fleshed it out better than anybody else has on this program yet, straight up.
We just introduced that legislation to City Hall uh recently.
Well, that's probably why, well, that's probably why.
Well, I, yeah, so like, it was, it's been a fight that's been going on for, you know, um since, you know, twenty seventeen. Um uh but yeah, so I I mean, it's been a fight for the past four years, but, you know, we're, we've, we're starting to win. You know, it's exciting, if we have a bill, we have a bill that's in City Hall. Um this current city council probably won't pass it, but if we uh, if we're successful, the next city council just might.
And you said you kind of rock with AOC's team a little bit, yeah?
I mean, yeah, so like.
So all the people that are out there that are criticized, like, I'm from the Tulsi clan, and a lot of them are straight up like AOC haters, and there are valid reasons to to uh. To uh, you know, I have criticisms, but within the clan of the people that 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 she came from, right, they're doing good work, like this guy right here. Like, like that homeless group that I work with, right, that also does something with AOC, so you can't just throw out everybody, you know what I mean? There are some really good people coming from this particular unit that that deserves to be a part of our coalition, yo, I'm really fucking excited about this John Bailey guy. I plan on introducing him to a a large number of my other groups, yeah, he's fucking awesome, I I loving it so far.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, look, man, honestly, I'm a huge fucking fan, man, I mean, straight up, man, and I want other people to know about your campaign, how can people, uh. You guys got a website, social media, what do you, what do you update, what's up?
Yeah, um uh, you know, Jonathanforqueens.org, uh or dot com, yeah, dot org will get you there as well, I guess. Um, that's like our our website, um, yeah, we're like in a, you know, we're like in a real need for like people to like. Like tune in and help us fight, we're kind of at this intersection where um, you know, it's the most packed race in New York City. And because of, like, when there's really packed races, what usually happens is people get scared to like take sides and like jump in. Um, to me, uh my thing is that uh, um. Yeah, it m- m- my thing is that, like, i- if if what we want is to like fight to create these changes. W- we gotta, everybody who knows that this is an important uh uh marker for the future of our city. Um it's time to tune in, it's time to jump in and get involved and fight because we only have a couple of weeks left. Uh till till election day, so, um, yeah, if if you, if you could, if you care about the things that. We're um, we're fighting for, the things that I've been talking about, um, go right now to the website and. Uh fill out the volunteer form, you know, um, you know, send in a message, uh and and we'll get you connected.
If you don't make it through the primaries, is there any way that you can run through uh independent?
Um, I I like, I I'll tell you, like, the amount of like ma- so like, a lot of people kind of misunderstand. The amount of work it takes to like do third-party like stuff. Um like, to me, I have no problem running against Democrats. Uh but it it takes more work and like if if it's so this hard to like, uh, you know. Make left campaigns go as it is, um, you know, making decisions that make it even harder for us. Um is is generally not something that i- is helpful for like, for for winning the things that we want to win.
Saying like, if if you don't win the primary, right, or would you consider running as an independent, like, you know, in case the primary doesn't work out?
So the, the date for uh submitting uh 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 petitions for the ballot line. For the general election was yesterday, um and you actually have to collect a lot more signatures.
Yeah.
Uh in order to get on, so it's.
It's too late.
Yeah, yeah, it's, and it's, it's more work, it's, it's a lot more work, so, um.
I would fucking help you, man, I'm a fucking beast on these streets, I don't know if you can tell, I'm a fucking beast out here.
I can see a canvassing machine in you.
I'm a fucking machine, bro, yeah.
Um, yeah.
Just me.
Me too, I like, I'll tell you, back in the, back in the early Afrosoc days, one of like the POC caucus of DSA. Like, you know, me, Jabari Brisport, who's like in state senate now, and like others, we'd like all canvas. We'd come back, like, I'd still have like two thirds of like our like signatures by myself, I'm serious, like, when I canvas, I go hard.
Yeah.
But uh the thing is like, um, you know, with everybody spread so thin with this election cycle. It's it's really hard to like, to like bring that level of fight, so, you know, if you like see this, if you care about the things that we're fighting for. Um, yeah, time to tune in.
Alright, cool, man, alright, so appreciate you, Jonathan for Queens once again, that sounds fucking dope, uh is that F O R or the number four?
Uh, F O R.
F O R.
Jonathan for Queens.
You.
Um except for on Twitter, on Twitter, it's Jonathan number four Queens.
Good to know.
It was too long.
Alright, is there, um, you regularly update Twitter and stuff, or are you more on Instagram, Facebook, what what are you on the most of?
Me personally, Twitter, um, I had recently, I don't know, started doing Twitter, um, so I'm not. So I'm not, I'm not great at like social media.
I'll get you some followers, there's something called like Thousand Leftists or something like that, like No Leftists Left Behind or something like that. And it's used to pump up your numbers and I will try to help you pump your numbers, yeah? Just from what I heard today so far, yeah, I think you're worth it, yeah, cool.
Thank you.
No doubt, man, no doubt, all right, cool, so, um, yeah, man, so. I want everybody to tune in for our next interview, which is gonna be the activist, uh, you know, I. This guy's activist, I could tell from things he's saying, and um, we're gonna do the active interview in a moment, yeah, there's gonna be a separate interview, so make sure you check that out, right, thanks.
It's a dark day in our nation when high-level authorities. Will seek to use every method to silence dissent, the truth must be told.
And if you want the truth, you need to check out independent media producers just like myself, DJ L seven. You should subscribe and hit the bell icon to get notifications when I release a new video. That includes Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and of course YouTube. Unfortunately, we have definitely seen that these mainstream outlets will cave to corporate interests, so we encourage you to join our independently moderated communities of Reddit and Discord. We also encourage you to subscribe to us on BitChute daily motion, so you can see the content that YouTube doesn't want us to let you see. Hey, now it's time for the most important part of the video, that's right, it's time for us to tell you about the Taking Action Group. Do you need an activist, or maybe there's no activists around willing to help with your cause and you need to learn to become an activist? That's exactly why we're here. Every week, we get up with people from across the nation, in fact, even sometimes nationally, and we develop strategies and a game plan to address. The issues that are affecting all of us. Every week, myself from New York City and, of course, my co-host Lisa from Los Angeles provide a coast-to-coast perspective on what's going on in the country. If you want to donate to help out with expenses, travel, equipment, you know, stuff like that, then I definitely appreciate it and you could hit us off. At Venmo or PayPal, thanks a lot, hey, by the way, we also have a merch store, so check it out. Oh my goodness, it seems like you've reached the end of the video, so make sure you check out some of our other videos, uh, make sure you subscribe. This is your last chance to do so, so thanks a lot, and looking forward to seeing you on the next one, hope you guys enjoy it. Please comment below if you have any questions or issues you'd like me to address. And if you're an activist, the time to make things happen is now.